And so depending on where we are with the public speakers on 3.56, we may break from the agenda momentarily while we take the items for 11:30, which are again going to be almost a couple of minutes at the most. So with that, we'll start with our items. We'll start with those in support first. First is Kenny Bell. I'm going to remind all speakers that you have three minutes.
Mr. Chair, are we going to have a staffer introduction first and some questions?
Sure.
Who's going to give the introduction from staff?
Carolyn? Kenny, one second. We're going to, we're going to give a presentation with the...
Good morning, members of the board. Carolyn Simpson, our planning director. The matter before you today is considering some revised language to incorporate into two of our county ordinances, ordinance number 555, as well as our zoning ordinance, ordinance number 348. Previously, this board had directed staff to take a look at other projects in the county that we could possibly consider for fast-track status based on the current economic conditions and based on trying to spur some type of development in the county. As a result of that, staff went back to the drawing board, and we have come back with proposed amendments to ordinance number 348 and to ordinance number 555, which is before you today for your consideration.
Okay. Thank you, Carolyn. All right. Now Kenny Bell. Kenny Bell?
Chair.
I'm sorry.
Supervisor Stone. Please have the opportunity to ask some questions first before we take any further comments.
Okay.
I'm going to probably be directing most of these to county council. According to government code 65854, a proposed zoning ordinance revision shall, emphasize shall, be heard in a public hearing before the lead agency, planning commission. Why are we not doing this?
Question by question. Amendments to ordinance number 348 and 555 concerning the potential for fast-track authorization for surface mining permits.
Can't hear you.
Reclamation plans, WEX permits, and modifications to these permits and plans do not require notice public hearings before both the planning commission and the board. Government Code Section 65853 governs when a zoning ordinance or an amendment to a zoning ordinance must be considered by the planning commission and the board of supervisors pursuant to notice public hearings. This code section only requires such consideration when the zoning ordinance or amendment to a zoning ordinance changes property from one zone to another, or imposes, removes, or modifies any regulations set forth in Government Code Section 65850. The proposed amendments before the board do not fall into either of the aforementioned categories.
Okay, so it's county council's position that we are in compliance with Government Code 65854 and that this revision is not deemed to be required by the planning commission? Is that correct?
Correct. That the code section is 65853 and 65850 that are the applicable code sections.
Okay. Does not the proposed amendments to ordinance 555 go before the state mining and geology board?
There are provisions, yes, in the Public Resources Code that require any amendment to our surface mining ordinance to be submitted to the board. However, the way I've read those statutes, it doesn't require it until after the board has adopted the amendment.
And I understand that. So do we have any idea how long that process will take?
Excuse me?
Do we have, do we know how long, assuming the board approves these amendments, how long the state mining and geology board would take to review those amendments?
Just a second here. I want to be specific. Once we submit it to the state, the board will review it, and then they will submit written comments back to the county. And we will have, if they don't agree that our ordinance complies with the provisions of SMAR, then we will have 90 days to submit a revised ordinance to the state board for And then the board has another 60 days to review any revised ordinance.
Okay. The purpose of our fast-track is to get a project before the board within 90 days, correct?
As stated in the fast-track policy, yes.
Okay. But we as a county, I don't believe we have control over the timetables that the state has in reviewing and commenting and requiring changes. How can we adhere to this fast-track process if we can't guarantee how long the state's going to take to get their provisions back to us, whether they're acceptable, whether we need to amend them, the time period for people to comment? It seems to me that it's not, it's a little bit outside our control.
Well, as far as middle of the ordinance amendment to the state, once it's submitted, once it goes into effect, it's in effect. And, you know, we can operate in accordance with it. There, the application of these statutes definitely has timeframes within which for their review and our response and any amendments to that ordinance that need to occur.
But that could exceed the 90-day period that we strive as a goal to get projects approved.
Well, my feeling is, is that fast-track authorization is approved subsequent to the effective date of the amendment, the timeframes within the policy would go into effect.
Okay. And what about the revisions to the local SMAR ordinance? Do those go before the planning commission, or are we bypassing that process?
Those are not required to go through the planning commission.
Okay. Are we not using the CEQA exemption 15061B3 inappropriately since no analysis was referenced in the staff report explaining how the proposal will have no possibility of causing a significant effect on the environment? And further, isn't the burden of proof regarding the environmental effects is on the agency and not the public, according to Davidson Home versus the city of San Jose, 1997?
If the board adopts the proposed amendments to ordinance numbers 348 and 555, sufficient evidence in the record will support the determination that the project is exempt and CEQA has been complied with. CEQA does not require the preparation of an initial study to determine if a project is exempt. In fact, the California Natural Resources Agency's website includes a CEQA process flow chart which indicates the public agency should determine if a project is exempt before it completes an initial study. Any board adoption of the proposed amendments are exempt pursuant to CEQA guideline Section 15061B3 because it can be seen with certainty there's no possibility the project may have a significant effect on the environment. Ordinance numbers 348 or 750 allows for surface mining permits, reclamation plans, WEX permits, and modifications to such permits and plans to potentially receive fast-track authorization pursuant to the provisions of Board Policy Number 832. Additionally, ordinance number 555.19 amends ordinance number 555 to allow the board to reserve to itself exclusive authority to investigate, hear, approve, conditionally approve, or disapprove all surface mining permits and reclamation plans, including modifications to such permits and plans included as a fast-track project as defined by Section 2134D of ordinance number 348. These ordinance amendments are merely procedural in nature.
Ms. Buster, I'm not asking you to read all the ordinances. I'm asking you in layman's terms to explain to the layman public and a non-lawyer sitting on this dais, are we not using the CEQA exemption 15061B3 inappropriately since no analysis was referenced in the staff report, how the proposal will have no possibility of causing a significant effect on the environment? I don't want you to read something, I want you to tell me as a lawyer how we're complying or not complying.
As I just said, the ordinance amendments are merely procedural in nature. There's no specific fast-track project associated with this, with this project, adopting these ordinance amendments. The ordinance amendments do not connect the county to approve any specific fast-track project. To perform any environmental analysis at this early stage would require the county to...
You can't, you can't answer the question, Karen, without looking at it.
I'm answering the question.
But you're reading it, you're reading it as part of the public record.
It's important for the record supervisor.
Yeah. Lead Agency Review, LART, can you tell me what that organization is?
What organization is what?
Lead Agency Review, State Department of Conservation, Lead Agency Review.
The lead agency is, is the county for this project.
Okay. And are we being audited at this time on our LART?
On our LART? We're being audited right now, my understanding is, on our surface mines by the state.
Okay. So is it not inappropriate that we even consider a fast-track at the time we're being audited by LART?
Well, I don't know much about what's going on with the audit. However, my understanding is they're looking at mines in the county, and they are making a determination as to whether or not those mines are compliant with SMAR.
Okay.
I don't think it's inappropriate to consider this action today, given that information.
Should projects in litigation be fast-tracked, yes or no?
Just a second, can I interrupt Supervisor Stone? But wouldn't it be prudent, I mean, they're looking at existing mines, but they're going to have some recommendations. The recommendations may affect the kind of conditions that would be advisable for new mines. So if their report is going to be with us, what, in a couple of weeks here? What, what's, why isn't it, I'm thinking from a legal standpoint, shouldn't we take a more considered approach here and wait for their, wait for their report?
I don't believe the audit has anything to do with the action that the board is considering today.
Yeah, but you just said you weren't aware of what was going on in the audit. We have, for the first time, a state agency that's overseas mining has come into the county and is doing extensive review of existing mines, some of which were approved many, many years ago. And there's always the issue in an urban, particularly in an urbanizing county, of trying to match, match conditions of projects with, with what's going on in the surrounding area and getting them up to date. And that goes on all the time. And that goes all the time in, in, in the law as well, as well as our procedures. So here we have, for the first time, I understand, ever, the state, what they call themselves, Office of Mine Reclamation is auditing our mines, and the report is coming out in two or three weeks. Isn't it prudent, from a legal standpoint, to wait until we get the report?
Maybe the planning department could address what's going on with the mine audit specifically.
Carolyn?
Unfortunately, I believe David Jones is out with, with the state right now on auditing one of the mines, so...
Supervisor Buster, it's my understanding that the Office of Mine Reclamation periodically does audit mines throughout the state. Our number has come up. They've been commencing with audits for the last few months. As far as the disposition of what the report will be, I don't know. Unfortunately, Dave Jones is out on inspection. But I also know we've been working with Mike Larr, the Department of Building and Safety. So as far as what recommendations will be coming out at this time, I do not know.
But they certainly could effectuate the process of fast-track mining project, that was the point. And I appreciate Supervisor Buster's comments. Just a couple more questions, Mr. Chair, I'll be finished. Should product, projects in litigation be fast-tracked, yes or no?
Should.
Should projects in litigation be fast-tracked, yes or no?
The action today isn't to fast-track a specific project.
I think the motivating factor of this, of this, of this agenda item is to fast-track a project that we will be seeing as a first applicant. And the question is, if that is the case, or then why don't we include solar projects into our, our fast-track here, being that it's probably one of the largest job creators in the entire county right now? It's my understanding while I was absent that you decided not to include that on this list because there is a couple of projects that have litigation against the county, but there are also the projects that are proceeding without litigation. And if, what's fair for the goose is fair for the gander, if we're going to be fast-tracking mines, then we should be fast-tracking solar projects in addition to other projects, which I'll mention later.
I think you can make a clear distinction between the action the board took on September 11th and the action that's proposed today. The action that was taken on September 11th and the litigation that was filed specifically against the, so, the board's solar policy, that was a challenge to the board's solar policy. If you're referring to surface mines and litigation that we have ongoing right now concerning a challenge to the Liberty Quarry EIR that was certified for a project that was denied, I believe that's project-specific and there's a clear distinction between the types of litigation.
Okay, then let me rephrase the question. We have solar projects that we are in litigation over, and therefore you have made the assertion that we should not be fast-tracking those projects, those types of projects, because we have existing litigation with some of those projects.
Actually, it's litigation, litigation can, not with specific projects, solar projects, it's litigation involving the board policy on solar projects.
Okay. So I would anticipate if the board approves this fast-track that we will see a specific mining project coming and requesting a fast-track that is under litigation. So would that not be imprudent, from a legal standpoint, to fast-track a project that is in litigation that needs to be vetted by the courts before we rush to judgment on approving such a large-scale, comprehensive project?
That project can move forward independently of the ongoing litigation on that project.
That's a great explanation. Thank you.
Supervisor Stone, I just want to mention, there is a, that is, another project that has come to my attention in my district, quite frankly. And if you may be here today to speak on it, okay. There is a dormant mine off the 71 freeway that, just, just west of Corona, that maybe may and very likely come into play as a result of the 91 freeway expansion that we're, as you know, we received TFI funds for, $1.3 billion project. That timing will be critical on that project. It's a project that I believe may even have vested rights, that if that's the case, will fall under this fast-track process, which again, very critical to ensure the 91 freeway project moves along. So while it may appear that this is the only project, Liberty Quarry is the only project that's being considered here, I can tell you that it's not.
Okay. If I can just continue for another moment, I appreciate your explanation of that. Let me say, fellow board members, that I will support this ordinance with the caveat that some language is included that I'd like the board to consider. Certainly, I'd like to just mention those recommendations, you don't have to act on them now, as we get into board discussion, we can act on those. But if we look at line 17 and a half on the ordinance, on page one. If we could add, brought forward exclusively by the supervisor representing the district in which the respective project is being proposed to be considered, also had to line 15... Second. My rationale is that we have a longstanding unwritten rule that each supervisor has an extensive understanding of his district in contrast to the other four districts. That's why we're all elected by district. That's because we all have the expertise, the, the issues that our constituents would like to advocate us for or against. And as such, we as the respective supervisor know what's best for our constituents and support those projects or issues, or not support those projects and issues. And thus, we, that being the supervisor in which a project is being considered to fast-track, should be the one to make the recommendation for a fast-track process. I also have, have an issue that this ordinance, the way it's written, allows every, every surface mining permit or any of those other projects that are fast-tracked to go directly to the board of supervisors, directly to us. And I think that, that's a mistake. I think at least a supervisor should be the one that should be making the recommendation. And then it says, or, it can be brought forward by our ADA director. I think projects of this magnitude, whether it's a surface mining permit, whether it's a nuclear power plant, I think these types of issues should come from the electeds and not from a staff member in the county. So I hope that the board will consider those and that we do continue to move these items forward. Other fast-tracks that I think we should be considering, we are, we just talked about the ports of LA and the importance that they have in our county. We should consider fast-tracking large box distribution centers because we could be the inland port, large box retailers, power plants, hospitals, scrapyards, landfills, and recycling centers. If we look at line 25, 26, and 27, that's where I'd like to see it stricken, where we allow the Assistant Executive Officer or Economic Development Agency Director to bring forward a fast-track. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Thank you, Supervisor Stone. Supervisor Ashley, followed by Supervisor Buster.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to sort of follow up on some of the comments that were made there. And the council, he says, I got to have a couple of comments and questions. What you're saying, in your opinion, that these amendments only change the procedures for how we might consider approved projects?
Yes.
Okay. But any project still has to comply with CEQA requirements prior to being approved by this board?
Absolutely.
Okay. Since all projects have to go through a CEQA review, then these amendments have to undergo CEQA review, is that correct?
These, and...
Just this ordinance?
And, and staff has made the determination that these ordinance amendments are exempt from CEQA.
Or a fast-track action.
Correct.
Okay. Okay. It, yeah, it seems to me like it's common sense, that since the CEQA review of the, of these fast-track changes to the ordinance are not necessary because it's a, it's a procedural change and the projects have to comply, still comply with CEQA, is that correct? So it looks like it just sort of comes as, closely as, I don't know, that's the way I see it.
Yes.
I know, but it's just my opinion, but that's what you're saying, too?
Yes.
Okay.
Supervisor Buster? All right. No further comments by members of the board? All right. Now to our speakers, I apologize, Mr. Bell. Again, I will say to everyone, unless you have extended periods of time given to you by others, your time limit is three minutes. When the yellow light comes on, you'll have one minute remaining, and when it starts flashing, 30 seconds. First is Kenny Bell, followed by John Smith, followed by Bill Smith.
Thank you, Les, brother chairman, and county supervisors. You too, Jim. Thanks for your time. This is a very important issue in the economic times we now have. There's a lot of things to be developed. By fast-tracking, you're not going to, people are not going to lose an opportunity to voice their opposition to any project. We're doing some fast-tracking in the city of Reno Valley now. Of course, it's new, and if it, if it works for everybody, if we have fast-tracking for other projects, why should we have it for this? I mean, it, there's no, there's nothing going to be deleted from people's rights to question the projects. And that's the key to me. Of course, I've been in construction all my life. I think this is really good. If someone's going to put up, and usually it's a private developer that puts up the money, it's not the county, it's not through the government's efforts, it's private money that pays to develop these type of projects. I think we would welcome that, since it's not costing the taxpayers anything. It's like a Kaiser when they built a hospital in Reno Valley. It was private money. It wasn't, the residents of Reno Valley didn't have to put money in their pocket to bring in more roads, repair the bridges, bring them up to code, like we did for other developers. One step at a time, this is a critical step, and I thank you all for your patience. You're going to hear a lot of people pointing at you and agreeing with you or not agreeing with you. I, I think it's healthy to have good-paying jobs. Mines typically pay well, and they do not put out the pollution that so-called experts are, are talking about. Like I said before, I've, I've been there, done that. As long as the laws are live by the state and federal governments, we have a pretty safe environment. Thank you all for your times.
Thank you, Kenny. John Smith, John Smith will be followed by Bill Smith. If I could ask the speakers to, when you're next up in the queue, to maybe sit off on one of the sides so we can get through this as quickly as possible.
Good morning, chairman and supervisors. I'm in support, of course, on behalf of my membership of the agenda item 356. Let me say something. I joined the union in 1961. Through that period of time, I had a lot of dealings with Toronto, California, in that area out there. Kaiser and Pacific Rail and Edno were partners in purchasing all that land. And of course, there was a great upheaval out there about too much growth. And the dairy farmers were really upset, and were going to push them out. So it is what it is today because of the opportunities to build a beautiful city out there that has become part of the county. What, what I will say to you is, I represent 4,000 members in the building trades cracks. And I was elected and official in organizing in the private industry and negotiating collective party agreements throughout California, Southern California especially. This is the worst time in the history of, I think, the labor movement prior to the Depression of '29. I have lost over 1,200 members. I have had some guys on the out-of-work list for up to five years. I have had men lose their healthcare, lose their homes. I have sat with men and their families that have moved out of $300,000 or $400,000 houses because of their good income in the construction industry and living in trailers. Now you can say what you want here, but this is about jobs. The political side is that you need, of course, time not wasted to put these people to work. These people are living in cars. I have apprentices that can't get out of the apprenticeship program. I'm one of the largest locals I, I know in this county. Now either you recognize that there's a human thing here that is so important to your decision, this country is weakened as far as employment. The market itself has went up and down so many times pensions are filing, and they're filing bankruptcy, they're falling into the red. Healthcare programs, the operating engineers, $50 million in debt.
John, I need you to wrap up.
Okay. What's most important, I think, here is, of course, what we believe, and that is to look at the project, always. But please don't forget the humane society here, I mean, the humanity society here, please.
Let me ask one quick question of you, since you're in this business. What is the unemployment still in the construction trades here in Riverside County?
Well, it's in spots worse than any place in the, in the country. I mean, if you go down into the deserts, but I would say, just in our area, I've lost I mean, if you go down into the deserts, but I would say just in our area, I've lost 25 to 35 percent.
So we're about 25, still unemployment about 25 to 30 percent in...
It's terrible. I've lost 1,100 members out of 5,000.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Bill Smith, Bill Smith will be followed by Eddie Rivera, who will be followed by Bill Perez.
Thank you, guys, here on this ordinance, 3.56. I will agree with Mr. Stone on one thing. Let's put the solar projects on that. You know, start fast-tracking some of those solar projects. The fast-tracking need right now, guys, and you know, John touched it, the economy is still bad. Down in Mr. Bonoy's area, we're very fortunate to have some Genesis Solar's projects come taking off, and they're really, our out-of-work list down there is just moving right and left. And we're having to recruit in areas that we normally wouldn't recruit in because we're having a hard time getting people to go down that area. There's no hotels, nowhere a place to stay. As far as the fast-tracking on open pit mines, you know, I got, if a box like a duck looks like a duck, it's a duck. If you go down the 215, Clinton Peak, you look to your left, that man's been developing land there for almost two and a half years under a facade of land development. That's a mine, guys. You got rock crushers set up and you're selling aggregate, that's a mine. On the 15 freeway, right there across from Lake Elsinore Shopping Center on the right side, you'll see another guy under the development of land development. He's been there for almost three years, taking down a mountain. It's a mine. You know, people are really complaining about everything else, Liberty Quarry, but I don't see no one bringing up those projects because they're camouflaged as land development. You know, Liberty Quarry and this whole fast-tracking, I think is going to be a great process with Mr. Tabaloni touching the 91 freeway. We have a lot of freeway roads coming up right now, and aggregate is a very high cost. Look at the 215 Skanska just got. There's 200,000 tons of asphalt in that. You're going to see a portable plant set up out there. That asphalt is aggregate, the cost of aggregate, the transporting the aggregate into the portable plant to set it up. The 91 freeway, look at right here what SEMA's got, all that concrete, all these freeways expansions are all aggregate. Right now, they're bringing aggregate from British Columbia to the ports of Long Beach and transporting it out, which means you have more trucks on the freeway. You know, this will hopefully may ease some of the cost as a developer on aggregates. So I really think the fast-tracking will get some projects that you gentlemen feel are in need to create jobs, create some tax revenue for our county so we can have other things, maybe give money to the safe house. That was a really good presentation that we gave.
All right. Thank you. Bill, Eddie Rivera, Eddie Rivera followed by Bill Perez.
Good morning. I just want to stand here before you, asking you to please approve this project. I've got about six or seven family members who would love to go and apply. I've got about six or seven friends from Lake Elsinore to Corona that would all love to apply, a couple of them with experience in those types of work. It's all paid for by the contractor. It's not coming out of our pockets. It's going to produce 100 or more jobs, good-paying jobs with benefits for people like myself with three or four kids. All that is very important to the overall picture of where we stand and where we want to go forward. So I certainly hope you guys all consider the working people out there who need this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Eddie. Bill Perez, Bill Perez will be followed by Lori Stollnaker, who will be followed by Steve Suket.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Appreciate your taking the time today to hear us out. I'm Bill Perez, Riverside, born and raised. I'm also the Executive Secretary, Business Manager for the Building Construction Trades Council, Riverside and San Bernardino Counties. I represent well over, or the locals I represent, represent well over 14,000 construction craft employees in the two-county area, including the world's finest construction craft training in our apprenticeship programs. I stand in support of the ordinances today, not specifically because of any one project, but because in my 37 years in the construction career, there's never been one project that is an aggregate of project after project after project. That's what, that's how we make a career in the construction industry for craft workers. The fast-track ordinance doesn't mean that the reviews are any less important. You still have give, you still have legal input, you still have CEQA. It just moves the ball quicker. Certainly, we have one project that's been mentioned here time and time again. If there's any poster child for moving a development process forward and permitting, that would be one of them. Now, I think the question was asked by Supervisor Tabaloni, what the unemployment is in construction today, since our recession started four years ago, September, actually a year before, in the residential industry. It's been the longest, deepest recession we've ever experienced in this county, in this country, in my career here also. We're still, for some crafts, we're still at 30, 40, and 50 percent unemployment. Now, there are hot pockets of employment currently in construction, however, they're very narrowly defined. We're doing well in solar, we're doing well and getting better in the infrastructure on highways, however, we can't make a career and we can't make a good, well-rounded accounting out of a couple of specific tranches of good work. The fast-track applies to many projects, including the mining, including the wind. The wind development is one of those where you have basically a brown field, a developed field, where they're upgrading the wind energy projects. Why should they go through the entire process? It makes sense. The ordinances, the addition to the fast-track ordinances, makes sense to me and I would very support it.
Bill, do you mind if I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
First of all, I do empathize with the unemployment in the construction trade, and I'm very pleased that in the third district, we actually saw a 500-unit specific plan that came through. It's, we had to kind of push all the dust off of it because it's the first big plan that we've seen in a while. My goal is to get our construction workers back to work, and you're not the first person that's mentioned this high unemployment rate that we're all very concerned about. But can you explain to me what the nexus is to the availability of aggregate and that high unemployment rate? Because I don't think there's any nexus to it at all because there hasn't been any evidence that there's a shortage of aggregate. There's a shortage of building homes because the building industry has suffered through this economic debacle. So if there's a nexus that I'm missing, can you explain it to me?
I don't believe I've tried to make that point. However, there are more broad nexuses in terms of, you know, the need has been established, of course. None of us would like to continue to look at the need to import aggregate or any other building material from Mexico or Canada or any other foreign country. Certainly, those jobs remain here also. The nexus for the fast-track, in my view, in terms of the construction industry, is to move the projects to the point where we get blades in the dirt and we get guys working. Now, unemployment, jobs, job, jobs, all that is, those are words here today. When you're sitting in a union hall, when you're answering the phone, when you're looking at those guys through the window crying about losing their health insurance for their family, losing their homes, losing their cars, that's real, that's personal, that's the reality. We don't need to keep having press reports come out of multiple agencies about process and procedure and delays and legal challenges because those guys sitting at home that can barely afford that 25-cent paper are the ones that are saying, again, how much longer do we have to wait? That is my, that's my consideration of the nexus.
Bill, do you agree, and I think your union has been the beneficiary to the tremendous number of jobs the solar industry has been creating? I think it's the largest job creator that this county is seeing during this economic downturn. Do you agree that solar projects should be fast-tracked in the county of Riverside?
I couldn't speak specifically to the county process, but I can tell you, under the federal and under the State Energy Commission, there has been processes under NIPA and under the BLM where they have a fast-track process.
But we have an opportunity to fast-track in the county. Do you think that those jobs are important enough to fast-track and get those thousands of people working, putting on these panels in the vast, open, solar-illuminated areas of this county and get these people back to work and saving their homes and giving them the health benefits they deserve?
I believe fast-track of those projects as well as other projects, as long as you have still the opportunity for the correct and the comprehensive review of those projects, regardless of the type of project, is what's important.
Would fast-tracking, in your view, with solar projects reduce that review, understanding that there's no planning commission review at all, if anything, as fast-tracked?
Quite possibly. But again, we're trying to sort of pigeonhole certain industries and specific projects. I'm speaking in a broader sense, and this is what frustrates our unemployed workers that don't have insurance and are losing their houses, is we debate all this in public.
But I'm with you. I support what you're trying to do. I want to create jobs. I think the solar is a great source of jobs in this county and should be added on the list and I would support that.
And speaking like a construction worker, let's just cut the crap and let's get working.
Thank you, Bill. Yes, Supervisor Stone, Lori.
I'd just like to clarify one issue, and that's with regard to the fast-track issue for large-scale solar projects and so forth. The policy before us says that any project that creates 40 new permanent full-time jobs resulting in capital investment of $5 million will generate 1.25 million in annual taxable sales. Every major solar project that we have currently would be covered by the policy that's before this board for approval today.
So we're saying all solar projects can qualify for fast-tracking under this policy that we're...
And the fact that they're already issued by a CUP process, which also qualifies them for fast-track.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Okay. Lori, Lori Stollnaker, followed by Steve Suket.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to address you again today. I am Lori Stollnaker. I'm the Executive Officer for the AFL-CIO in San Bernardino and Riverside Counties. I'd like to talk a little more about the broader picture, although I want to praise Riverside and thank you, guys, for your vision and your courage in moving this issue forward and for today's hearing. We have 289,000 union members in our two counties under our jurisdiction. The project that's before you, it has been before you for a long, long time. The point that's been made about the unemployment percentage in San Bernardino and Riverside Counties hasn't really told the devastating tale of workers in these two counties and specifically Riverside County this morning and the devastation that it's created on their families. There's a lot more than a building construction trades job, Supervisor Stone. This quarry and its project will create hundreds of ancillary jobs. Every time you hire family members in construction, all of these construction projects create further jobs, retail jobs, food service, lots of different jobs. I think that this board has an opportunity to really show leadership in creating jobs. All across the United States, we are hearing over and over and over what we need, the number-one priority is jobs, jobs, jobs. Not just any job. Any job won't help us come out of the situation we're in. Liberty Quarry is a damn good project, and Granite Construction is a good employer. These are prevailing wage jobs that will pay good wages, provide benefits, create revenue for this county, which is desperately needed, and provide jobs for local hires. Now, I know you were grilling Billy Perez about union, 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 but these, this creates jobs for local hires. These are people outside of our union who do have an opportunity to get into an apprenticeship program where they can earn while they learn. This project is good for Riverside. It's good for this community. It will help us, help us here in the county of Riverside come out of this recession. And as I was driving here this morning...
You just wrap up.
While stopped at an intersection, I saw a sign posted on one of the corners, and I'd like to quote it because I think it's very fitting for here this morning. The sign said, "Let's Get America Working Again." It should be, "Let's Get Riverside Working Again." I urge you to support this project and vote for it.
Thank you, Lori. All right, Steve Suket, followed by Danny Villasenor. I hope I'm pronouncing that correctly, Danny, followed by Dennis Fry. Steve.
Hi there. My name is Steve Suket. I am a landowner, business owner here in the county of Riverside. I did want to, I agree with a lot of things people said, but the main thing is the fast-track ordinance. We have built a 1.5-megawatt solar plant here. We have a self-storage facility. My partners and I also own the Prado Pit, which is at the 71-91 freeway, which is an idle mine that we want to get the rest of the sand out of to help build the 91 freeways that are coming up. Basically, just to give you a little idea, the first phase, the billion-dollar phase of the, excuse me, the 91 freeway takes approximately 300,000 yards of concrete. So, you know, if we can fast-track, and I've processed a lot of projects through this county for many years, and if we could, if we could speed things up a little bit, it would be very efficient for all of us, you know? And that being said, that creates the jobs, you know? If it doesn't take three years to get a project approved, you know, and we can do it in a year, start to finish, or 90 days, or whatever you guys think. And I understand what you're saying about, hey, you can't guarantee because you have a state agency that says, hey, just because we told you, we gave you 90 days, you get it in the state, and I process jobs to the states, too. The state, too, and it's a very difficult, it's slower than you guys. So I think just, what I want to say is collectively, we got to move a little faster and be a little more efficient somehow, in some way, you know? And that's going to help everybody in this room, basically, you know? Whether you're for a project or against it, I think we're talking about an ordinance here that helps many projects and not just one, you know? It doesn't matter if it's a solar deal or a shopping center or whatever it is. And so that's, I wanted to just bring that to you, is that we got to be quicker and more efficient. Okay? Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Thanks, Steve. And I know the frustration you've gone through on a few of your projects, and specifically my district.
Yeah.
Okay. Danny, how am I, tell me how you say your last name.
It's pronounced Villasenor.
Thank you. I should just pronounce it like that, the way it sounds, okay? Danny's going to be followed by Dennis Fry. Go ahead, Danny.
Good morning. I'm an out-of-work union ironworker, and I'm here to just let you guys know that I really support this project. It would mean a lot of work for myself and for a lot of my brother, union ironworkers. So anything you can do to help us would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Danny. Dennis Fry, Dennis will be followed by Mike Anderson. Mike Anderson will be followed by Gabriel Villarreal.
I've been a union ironworker since 1977. The union ironworkers appreciate all the time and efforts here. And on top of that, I can say recently I was at a solar area wind farm, and it was done on time, on budget, 175 days, no recordable injuries. So you got to write people that will be doing this kind of work. Thank you very much.
Good. Thank you. Mike?
Yeah.
Mike Anderson will be followed by Gabriel Villarreal.
How you doing? My name is Mike Anderson. I'm a local 433 ironworker. I've been there 18 years. I've been out of work for about eight, nine months now, and before I was working, I had always had to travel to LA. I would drive about 150 miles a day. That cuts into a lot of my expenses for my payments, my house. I'm starting to lose my insurance now, so what if you guys could do to bring the work to us, hey, we really appreciate it. I think...
Thank you, Mike. Gabriel Villarreal. Gabriel Villarreal will be followed by Gary Johnson.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. My name is Gabriel Villarreal, business agent for the ironworkers here in covering San Bernardino Riverside County. You asked a question, Chairman Tabaloni of the...
My name is Gabriel Villarreal, business agent for the ironworkers here in covering San Bernardino Riverside County. You asked a question, Chairman Tappeloni, of the unemployment rate for our local is 30%, 50% four years ago. And, you know, we mentioned solar projects. If we wouldn't have solar projects going now, we'd be still at 50%. Thanks to the Genesis Project, there's over 300 construction workers out there. I have almost 100 workers out there right now. And one of the things that this project and all projects, nobody's mentioned is it creates new jobs, not only through our pressure program, but it brings our veterans to work. I have 15 new veterans, apprentices at the Genesis right now, that were fresh from Iraq, Afghanistan, Kuwait, and certain places. So this, that's one of the things that, one of the best benefits to these projects, at all projects. And the local hire, as you heard the member before me, he's been traveling in LA for many years. We need these jobs here in the county. And, you know, just like I have an obligation, and so do you guys, is to create jobs. As long as they follow the rules to approve this project, let's get this project going. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Gabriel. Gary Johnson, followed by Adele Harrison, followed by Nicholas Adcock.
Gary Johnson, writing a construction company here, voice support for these fast-track amendments that would allow quarry projects to be fast-tracked if the board so chooses. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Adele Harrison. Adele Harrison, again, followed by Nicholas Adcock, who will be followed by Terry Henderson.
Thank you. I'm just here to thank Supervisors Ashley Trevoloni and Benoit for supporting jobs in southwest Riverside County, and ask that you will continue to show your approval of fast-tracking these all-important projects in Riverside County, which are so important to growing our economy. And I would hope that Supervisor Buster and Stone would join you. Thank you.
Thank you, Adele. Nicholas Adcock. Nick. Followed by Terry Henderson.
Good morning, Honorable Chair and members of the board. My name is Nick Adcock. I'm here on behalf of the Greater Riverside Chambers of Commerce. Kind of come before you today, obviously, you know, the, we've been here before, the arguments aren't new. It's interesting that you find so many representatives of the labor community out here. You also find representatives from the business community out here, and I think that that says something. It says that when you have labor and business both telling you the same thing, that this project, or that any projects that fit this ordinance need to be fast-tracked, it's telling you something. It's telling you that the community is calling out to you, say, here's an opportunity for you to help us. At the Chamber of Commerce, you know, we support this amendment to this ordinance. We do think that if there are opportunities to fast-track particular projects and get people back to work sooner, that's something that needs to be explored, needs to be something that's proved and aggressively sought after. Also, you know, the other thing to think about it too is that, you know, many opportunities have been put out there, and we're looking for opportunities where private investment can come in and pull people back to work, and this is one of those opportunities, and I think that must be taken in consideration. This isn't at the taxpayers' dollar. That's all important to have the support of the chamber for this ordinance. You also have the support, and I'll turn these in to the clerk, but you also have the support from our sister chambers, both in Palm Desert and in Indio, as well as letters from several members of the community across Riverside County that support this ordinance. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Nick. Terry Henderson will be followed by Julie Gilbert.
Well, I can still say, "Good morning, gentlemen."
Good morning.
And I'm glad I made that just before the 11:30 hearings.
By the way, the Honorable Terry Anderson from the city of La Quinta.
Thank you very much. I don't know about you, but one of the things that I hear most commonly is government moves in slow and mysterious ways. In my opinion, if we have a fast-track, that should be the standard that we use to get projects through, not the fast-track, it should be the standard. And then when you adopt fast-track as the standard, begin to look for fast-track. I urge you to take the mysterious out of slow and mysterious government and approve this today, and then let's look for improving the improvement. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. Julie Gilbert. Julie will be followed by Kenny Calvin, who will be followed by Doug Boyce.
Good morning, supervisors. Thanks for the opportunity to be here. I'll just be brief. I want to add my voice to those that are in support of the fast-tracking process. I'm a 20-year resident of the area, and I think everybody is in agreement that jobs, and more jobs are what are needed right now, that there are people here that have testified very eloquently about how people are hurting and how we need to stimulate our economy. And everything that we have heard about this project so far, and I know it's already been extensively vetted, but if fast-tracking is going to be applied to projects, I just think it should be applied to projects such as quarries, if they're vetted, and they're going to be a benefit to the residents of the community. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Julie. Kenny Calvin. Excuse me. Kenny will be followed by Doug Boyce.
Good morning, gentlemen, ladies. To answer your question, Mr. Stone, hell, yes. Put the solar on the fast-track, and also the quarry. You know, at any time, I would like somebody to, one of the board members, to come down to our local union on the fourth Monday of the month and watch our guys sign in. You know, one of the big debates going to be with this presidential election coming up, are the politicians disconnected from the real people? And I would like to think that maybe Riverside Board of Supervisors are not disconnected from the real folks. And when you settle, when you slow things down and just keep going on and going on and spending two or three years to get something going, I mean, you guys act like the Federal Drug Administration trying to get an Aspirin, you know, and get it approved. It takes nine years to get, you know, a Tylenol approved. So let's, let's deal with the real folks, the guys who are out there in the street and put their shoes on, take a lunch pail to work. That's the guy we got to get back to work. If you get him back to work, he can afford the refrigerators, he can afford the cars, he can afford all of the other things that goes along with putting everybody back to work. Let's fast-track everything. Let's get it back, guys. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Kenny. Doug Boyce, followed by Art Garcia.
Good morning, gentlemen. I'm a resident of Temecula since 1980, also a small business owner since 1980. But I come before you today based on the fact that I'm a registered civil engineer. And what I want to point out is the opposition's arguments to Granite, to Liberty Quarry are based on bad science. I'm not going to, I'm not going to justify, the stuff about the mountain falling down, the river contaminated, and the wildlife corridor do not justify a comment. However, the air quality issue is something I've looked into fairly extensively. In the hearing before the supervisors here in Riverside, it was stated that the opposition was using the wrong factor for the access road from the freeway to the mine. I have heard nobody dispute that since then. I assume that that's fact, based on nobody opposing it. I also studied the planning commission hearings. I wasn't able to attend them. But there was a guy named Paul Weir, I'm not sure which state, consultants or something. He claimed that the Kleinfelder was using the wrong factor for the blasting impact on the air quality. And I've since done some investigation on my own and discovered that that, in fact, was the right factor. So, I form my opinions based on facts, not on fear-mongering or hyperbole. The facts of this issue show that the quarry will be a positive for the county. I urge you to vote in that regard. The opposition's arguments are based on bad science. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. Art Garcia. Good morning, Art.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I think I know pretty much all of you pretty well, except for Supervisor Stone. Really haven't had the pleasure. I want to start off by saying, Supervisor Billy, thank you for coming out to our retrieved community action partnership out in the desert. Keynote speaker, we had an excellent conversation, and I appreciate you coming out. Supervisor Buster is my supervisor, and in spite of which way you may vote, Bob, in the past or today, I still have my 100% support, so I appreciate you, what you do for us in District One. And I want to start by really thanking the folks out here. I'm speaking in favor of the fast-track issue, which applies to, you know, all kinds of different jobs, but the folks in the Temecula community, you know, that says something when folks turn out to vote. And I want to quote Al Gore, just real quickly, "I was against it before I was for it." So I've been a lifelong union member, and the reason I say that is, you know, I was, I had some impartial concerns with the quarry, along with the local public opposition, so that got my attention. And so I was torn inside, because I've always voted union, I've always supported union, I've always bought union, always been union. Until recently, so recent, it was January 2007, I was laid off from my aerospace job, hired it when I was 18. You know, put many years there due to medical reasons, and been unemployed ever since. You know, I worked in aerospace, manufacturing, did everything from inspect aircraft nacelles to inspect the Titan rocket, Titan III, Titan IV that we built at Goodrich. So I just want to say that because of being out of work, I lost my home last year during foreclosure. I had to apply for food stamps and, you know, it's not a good thing, you know? It's not good. I had to man up and finally apply for it, and also the county healthcare, RCHC, so I appreciate that. You know, I want an opportunity to work. I'm willing to retrain. You know, I'm willing to disfide you anything. I would prefer to work union, but I'll work non-union. I'm 52 years old, and, you know, I want to be self-sufficient, so this is about fast-track. I'm speaking, you know, not so much about the quarry. That issue will come up later for discussion, but I realize this is a dual issue here. So I want you to please reconsider, Supervisor Stone. I really do appreciate, you know, you representing your district. My time is up, Supervisor Buster. It's okay to change your position, but if you don't, you still have my support. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Art. All right. That concludes the host's report. I'm very quickly going to ask Dave on the land use items. These are all, do you have any, do we have, are these pretty routine items, all three of them? Kristi.
Mr. Chairman.
Before you go to those, though, I want to make sure we, I want to make sure, yes?
I just want to make sure that we get successor agency items and IHSS.
Correct, yeah. That's before we go to that. Do you have a number of speakers on these items either? Should know, these are routine. All right. So what I'm going to do, ladies and gentlemen, very quickly go through these 1130 items. First will be our successor agency meeting, redevelopment agency 4.1, 4.2. I'll move approval of those two items. Motion and a second, please vote. Motion is unanimous. Now our interim supportive services public authority meeting, 7.1. I'll move approval of that item. I'll second your motion, please vote. Motion is unanimous. Now to our interim authority meeting, item 10.1. Move approval. Motion and a second, please vote. Motion is unanimous. As this is our flood control, water conservation district meeting, 11s 1 through 11 4. I'll move approval of those items. Second. Motion and a second, please vote. Motion is unanimous. Now taking us to our county board, regional parks, open space district meeting, item 13.1 on the district side. Motion and a second, please vote. Motion is unanimous. Now to our 11:30 AM public hearings, our general plan amendment initiation process. Kristi, I think, we're here. Item 15.1.
15.
Anyone in the audience wish to speak on item 15.1?
Move staff recommendation.
Motion and a second, please vote. All right. Motion is unanimous. Now moving away to 16.1 and 16.2. Sorry to throw you off.
Mr. Chairman, in the interest of time, I'm going to move to continue 16.1 and 16.2 for seven days.
Seven days? Okay. Is there anyone in the audience who should speak on item 16.1 or 16.2? So you know what? We have a motion and a second to continue this item. I think we have, I'll second your motion, to continue this for one week. Motion is unanimous. All right. Now we are going to go into the opposition on this item, unless the board would like to take a final break. Up to you guys. You okay? Leave to do that after we vote, just watch. Just watch each of you. All right, we're going to go into the opposition on this item, item 3.56, starting now. These are members of the city council first that have, and also have nine minutes given to them by other members, total of nine. So first to call in Mayor Chuck Washington, followed by Mayor Pro Tim, Mike Nigard.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, Supervisors, I'm Chuck Washington, mayor for the city of Temecula. Just a little over a week ago, on September 17th, we Americans celebrated the 225th anniversary of the signing of the U.S. Constitution. That signing was more symbolic, more than symbolic. We have become a beacon of freedom for so many around the world. Why is this freedom held so dearly by the peoples of all nations, and especially here in America? For one is our ability to exercise religious freedom, but it is also because we have provided the opportunity to determine our own fate. It is why we celebrate local control in little hamlets in large cities all across this nation. In Temecula, we have attempted to do this in every endeavor, and for the most part, we have succeeded. We are a safe city with a balanced budget and a thriving and growing economy. And yet, when it comes to the greatest threat to the Temecula Valley's future, we have been thwarted at every juncture to exercise local control. This has been disheartening, to say the least. And yet, in good faith, we pressed on as the Liberty Quarry project worked through the county process. We celebrated the denial provided by your planning commission and subsequently by this board of supervisors. However, the certification of the project EIR without an approved project was puzzling in the kindest of descriptions, and maybe even bizarre. And now, today's consideration of changes to the county's fast-track eligible projects brings us before the board yet once again. The dramatic and rock-strewn beautiful southern entrance to this county is on a fast-track to permanently become a pit. This will be our grand entrance. Welcome to Riverside County. Why would we want to forever destroy the county's entrance? Why would you change your law to enable impactful mining projects to bypass standard planning review? I can't imagine that you truly believe it would be wise to skip steps in the planning process. I can't imagine that you truly believe it would be wise to skip steps in the planning of massive surface mining pits with multiple heavy industrial processing plants. Environmental documents drafted by the mining industry, for the mining industry, should never skip critical peer review by your trusted and appointed planning commissioners. In fact, when your planning commission reviewed the Liberty Quarry EIR, they said no. Why now would you want to shut your planning commissioners out of this process? There are 677 open pit surface mines in the country that the EPA has listed as emergency cleanup sites or superfund sites that have been abandoned. California has 50 of them. They are called AMLs, or abandoned mine lands of surface pits, where mineral extraction or processing occurred and now pose serious threats to human health or the environment. What's frightening is the EPA and all the permitting agencies will rely on the Liberty Quarry EIR, a masterpiece crafted by the mining industry for granite construction to get their project approved. Remember, just a few months ago, this board said, "There are just too many risks." You were right. There are too many risks. There is no doubt in our mind that if ever, if there were ever to receive, this project were ever to receive the board's approval, Liberty Quarry will ultimately land on that EPA list and probably be one of the largest of them at our grand entrance to Riverside County. This is not the gift you want to leave your grandkids or mine. Please don't allow any future large-scale, environmentally significant surface mining projects that are monumental to communities and tens of thousands of people to bypass your planning commission review at the expense of the health and welfare of your citizenry. Please consider your planning commission as a valuable asset to review projects of this magnitude. We urge that you reject fast-track of surface mines and Liberty Quarry. Thank you.
Chuck.
Mayor Pro Tem Mike Nigard, also nine minutes, followed by Councilman Jeff Comentaro.
Good morning, Chairman Tavalloni and Honorable Supervisor Mike Nigard, Mayor Pro Tem for the city of Temecula. I'm not going to sidestep the issue at hand today. There's only one reason why the proposed change to your ordinance is on the table today that will enable fast-tracking of surface mines, and that's Liberty Quarry. The denied Liberty Quarry was resurrected back to life with its misleading EIR, and on behalf of tens of thousands of residents, I can easily say that the Temecula Valley is frustrated and angry. That's where I leave my prepared speech. But listening to today, I've heard that there was a great concern over jobs. Let me tell you what's going on in Temecula today. If you want a job, come to Temecula. Recently reported last week, tourism over the past two years is up $100 million. Currently, we're under construction for a six-story hospital that will have 500 direct jobs, 1,000 ancillary jobs as industry grows up around it. Over $140 million has recently been invested in private capital into our Old Town area. This is recent. Over the past three to six years, over $300 to a half a billion has been invested by private industry by expansions, professional hospital supply, laboratories, Forest City with their second-best performing regional shopping center in the nation, second only to Victoria Gardens out in the Rancho Cucamonga area. Almost half a billion dollars has been invested. We've become a mecca for higher education, with Cal State San Marcos establishing a permanent campus in our region and six other higher education facilities beginning to grow up. We're about to expand those as well, as higher education facilities will start to become available on the hospital site and as we look to expand Cal State San Marcos, not only at its present location, but also at our existing or our previous city hall, which is now being used for other purposes. Currently, we have the French Valley Parkway under construction. Cities don't build freeways, we do. Phase one is under construction as we speak. Funding is almost in place for phase two. There are hundreds of homes being built in Temecula. The existing home industry has no inventory. It is a seller's market. None of, what I'm telling you here is hyperbole. Recently, we completed construction on our civic center and parking structure, another $70 million approximately. And what is most telling, which I'm most proud of, is over the past six months, 530 new businesses, new businesses pulled licenses to operate in the city of Temecula, 530 new businesses. Gentlemen, over the years, I've interacted with all of you. I have a tremendous respect for all of you. You must listen to us. We are the city council for the citizens of Temecula. This is not a political issue for us. I'm in my third term, I'm running for my fourth. I'm well past having to do things for political purposes. People know who I am. This is bad. This is not correct. Now, I can support this fast-tracking of this surface mine if you put it in the hands of Mr. Supervisor Jeff Stone. Everything that I've just told you here today, he knows intimately and more because he interacts with it every single day. I could continue down this list, but in Temecula, we're creating jobs. Not only do we have a balanced budget, but our budget exceeds our surplus, and we just cut taxes for over 4,000 of our citizens by refinancing their CFD bond debt. We know what we are doing, so when we come to you and ask you to listen to us, I'm giving you this passion plea. Please listen to us. None of these people who came up and spoke in favor of this has had any intimate knowledge of what I've just told you. We're not making this up. Now, if Liberty Quarry wants to come back and reapply, that is their right to do, and will take up the EIR once again, and they'll have their studies, and we'll have our studies, and it'll come before the board again. But if the purpose of fast-tracking or changing this ordinance is to bring Liberty Quarry back, then that is wrong, and it's bad government, and it makes people lose faith in government. And at least, at least you can do is put it in the hands of the supervisor. And let him decide whether or not it's true.
All right. All right. We've done pretty good up until now, so remember from past hearings, we don't allow any outburst of chairs or booze or anything, all right? So, with respect to everybody, let's keep it that way. Thanks.
Thank you, and I'll finish. The least we can do in your ordinance is to let the supervisor in your respective districts make that decision. I want to finish once again. I'm very passionate, this is very meaningful to me, I have respect for you all, I've worked with all of you, with the exception of Supervisor Billy, I've not had that opportunity. We, we have a great supervisor in Supervisor Stone, we trust him. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Mike. Next is Councilman Jeff Comentaro. Jeff? Jeff will be followed by, and you also have nine minutes, followed by Bob Johnson.
Thank you. Let me first say, I hope you'll appreciate the fact that I won't take nine minutes.
Well, you didn't have to say that, but yes, we will.
Me too. As I understand that the reason you're considering this item today is that the board is interested in doing everything it can to see that new jobs are created and to see that those are created as soon as possible. Boy, I agree with you 100%. I couldn't agree with you more. Some members of the board believe that Liberty Quarry will be the vehicle that creates those jobs, and it's in those opinions that we differ strongly. For the last two years, I've been working in conjunction with the U.S. Immigration Service and their EB5 program on a project that, based on a report by the noted economist Dr. Michael Evans, will create 1,146 permanent new jobs. I'd like to detail what the progression of this process has been. At the beginning of the job generation count, it was much higher, as immigration allowed jobs through tenancy. Midway through my two-year process, they got smarter and realized that those weren't new jobs at all. Those workers would only be moving from one location to another. So, early this year, they announced a new policy that jobs cannot count if they involve tenancy or are moving from one location to another. This is critical because the number of new jobs a project creates determines how much the project can finance through the EB5 program. The Immigration Service correctly viewed job generation differently. They learned and they adjusted. About two months ago, they again revised their policy. Previously, a project could count jobs created by what they referred to as guest expenditures. That is, if your project is attracting tourists for the day or for overnight stays, they would spend money at other businesses, thus creating additional jobs. The policy change was that although the principle is still certainly a valid one, you have to prove that your project is creating new capacity to bring tourists to the region. Otherwise, the same people would come to the region with or without your project, and again, no new jobs would be created. Again, immigration's points were valid. Again, they learned and they adjusted. So, how does this pertain to fast-tracking Liberty Quarry? Immigration has now set the benchmark for what is and isn't new job creation. First, they said that new jobs or that jobs just moving from one location to another are not new jobs. Clearly, that's the case with Liberty Quarry, and that's been proven time and time again. As in the second case I cited, Liberty Quarry, or any new quarry, would not expand the capacity to use materials that they produce. Will the county consider revising the circulation element of the general plan to add more roads merely because more road base is available? Of course not. No municipality would. Therefore, without new capacity, these jobs cannot be considered new. Without the generation of new jobs, there can be no justification for granting fast-track status to Liberty Quarry. I ask that you also learn and adjust and come to the realization that there are no new permanent jobs being created here, and therefore, there's no need to fast-track Liberty Quarry. It's been said earlier this morning that this hearing is not specifically about Liberty Quarry. I would hope that that's the case, and if it is, I think you have to very seriously consider Supervisor Stone's amendments. Why not specifically include large solar projects as well? And why not put it in the hands of the supervisor in the district? Supervisor Tavalloni, you raised the issue of the mine in your district, very valid, and I understand that. If you had the ability to bring that forward and fast-track, you could do it under Mr. Stone's amendment. It would not infringe your right to do that or any of the others. If anybody didn't want a project in their district to be fast-tracked for whatever reason, certainly you have that prerogative as well. So, I ask you to support Mr. Stone's amendments if you're going to consider this issue today. I thank you very much.